Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting on May 4, 2020. I am going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'm going to read the right to know law. As the Chair of the Goffstown School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. This meeting is being broadcast on local cable access Goffstown, as well as on the Goffstown YouTube channel. If anyone wishes to provide public comment, please call 603-766-5646. You will need to enter a participant code, which is 685-562, at which time you'll be put on hold. To speak, you need to hit star nine. Our Business Administrator Scott Gross will be answering the phone. Please provide, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We've previously sufficiently posted this information, and this body has consistently followed through on all the requirements pursuant holding a meeting in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12. In the event the public is unable to access the Zoom meeting due to a widespread system problem, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. We need to take a roll call attendance. When I say your name, say here, and if you're alone. Okay, Ellen Vermakowitz. Oh, I think you're muted, Ellen.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
I'm here and I'm alone.
Okay, thank you. Tim Stetson.
Here and alone.
Susanna Bouzelle.
Here.
And alone?
Alone, yes.
Thank you. Janelle O'Brien.
Here alone.
Jared Talbot.
Present and alone.
Okay. Ginny McKinnon. Ginny?
Here and alone.
Thank you. Retta Chaffee.
Here and alone.
And I'm Heather Trapez. I'm here and alone. We have our Superintendent Brian Balki.
Present and alone.
Our Business Administrator Scott Gross.
Here and alone.
Our HR Director Kate McGrath.
Here and alone.
Our Assistant Superintendent Mary Claire Berry. I think she's muted. You're here?
I'm here and I'm alone. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And our Administrative Assistant Denise Morin. Okay, thank you, everyone. So next, let's rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, do you have the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on with our agenda. We need to approve the April 20, 2020 Board Meeting Minutes. Denise sent a change a little bit later, earlier this afternoon, so that is the minutes that I need approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that she sent most recently.
Okay, that's Tim. And do I have a second?
Second, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen. Did anybody see anything?
Sorry, I had a, didn't have a chance to look at the new one. The old one I saw, there was a vote taken where it said that it was 9-0-0, but Ellen had voted no. So it said that she voted no, but it said, no, no, sorry. Let me see if I can find it.
Yeah, I remember that that was on the stairs.
I believe so, yeah.
So it should be 9-1, right?
Was it the stairs? I feel like it was the...
It was the back stairs. 8-1.
8-1.
It was the stairs.
It was.
So she has 8-1 on the revised one.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks, Janelle. Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, I will call a roll call. Ellen Vermakowitz.
Yes.
Thank you. Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Ginny?
Yes.
Retta? Where'd she go?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. And Heather, yes. So we have eight, no, seven yeses and one abstaining. Did you get that, Denise? Okay, thank you. Correspondence, Brian?
Mr. Gross is going to put a couple of things up on the screen for you. I'd like to begin by thanking Deb Morton, who works for Coca-Cola. And on behalf of her organization from the Bedford campus, Scott's going to show a picture of Deb's daughter, I think. And she, as part of Coca-Cola, they donated 30 iPads, tablets, to the school district. So there's a picture of Mr. Lewis, who has been in charge of our device distribution process. And that's Deb's daughter. And we'd like to thank Coca-Cola for that very generous gift of those 30 iPads. We'll put them to good use. I think we had a couple of other things, Mr. Gross, if you could pull up. We had pictures from the PFT. The PFT Group Parents Association at Maple Ave had a very successful food drive. And you can see here, that's sideways, but they did this all remotely. So people bought things either on Amazon or other delivery services, had them delivered to the PFT President's house. And then, I think it was somewhere around 17 boxes of food were then given to the Goffstown Networks. We'd like to thank all the generous families from Maple Ave and PFT for making that happen. And did we have one more, Scott?
We do, but there, I have to make sure that they're clockwise for you, so. This is a very big production, Brian.
So this was a publication that Mrs. Pischka did at Maple Ave, where they captured artwork that students were doing. And they really had some pretty neat exhibits, and they put together a very nice publication that they sent home to families. So this just provides some additional information for Maple Ave families and recognize the hard work of our great students. So thank you for sharing those, Scott.
That's great. Is that all for correspondence, Brian?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Accommodations, good news. Ginny, I see your hand up. You're muted, Ginny. Okay, go ahead, Ginny.
I'll get this before long. I'd like to give accommodation out to a couple of alumni of Goffstown High School, Eric Bolter and Jack Charbonneau, who have started a nonprofit, Kindness Cares, and have been delivering food and all kinds of needed items to families in Goffstown and surrounding communities. They've been doing a lot of really good, helpful work to people and just wanted to send a shout out to some alumni of Goffstown High School who are working very hard during this pandemic.
Thank you, Ginny. That's great. Anybody else have accommodations, good news? Okay, seeing none. Move on to public comment. Scott, is anybody called in?
I am trying to show you the screen, but there is nobody that has called in.
Okay.
That's our little dashboard that we have for this, so it's pretty cool.
Scott, this is very high-tech.
All right, well, thank you. So then I'm going to close public comment. Moving on to committee reports. Planning and Communication Report. Retta?
Okay, before I do that, I realized there was one thing for accommodations and good news, and I don't know if you all caught, the middle school had a talent show that they posted on Facebook, which is amazing, because it wasn't just performing arts. They also had people that did knitting, Lego structures, whatever. It was pretty cool what they put on. Anyways, for PNC, first and foremost, I want to just remind everyone that this is the kickoff of Teacher Appreciation Week. And I think, you know, in the past, we've tried to recognize this with the breakfast that we provided in each of the schools, and that is obviously not possible at this point. But we are, you know, we would like to get a letter out to the teachers, but I think that, you know, it's, as Brian had mentioned in his video, it's really nice if these communications can go directly to the teachers from everybody in the community. So certainly encourage everyone to do that. Obviously, they've been pretty pivotal in how we're responding right now. So they're doing an amazing job. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. It's the whole week, so today is just the first day. And I think Teacher Appreciation Day is on the 5th, so that would be tomorrow. Also, we will have non-public, a non-public session at the end of the meeting to discuss scholarships coming up.
Okay, great. Thank you, Retta. Finance discussion, Scott, that's you.
Yeah, so I'm going to bring up the Manifest Summary Report, which I sent electronically. So before you tonight, you have a manifest totaling $1,906,349.53, of which the vast majority is payroll, as usual. So payroll equals $1,370,666.74. In terms of special ed activity, we have Durham Transportation for $113,000, Spalding Rehab, $17,000, Strong Foundations, almost $15,000, Suresk, Birch Tree Crest Collaborative, and Boothby. So again, the subtotal didn't add up properly, so I apologize for that. In terms of general expenses here, we have our April assessment for the SAU. Goffstown Truck Center, $92,652.50. We did receive a credit, as we had mentioned before, for fuel charges. That was incorporated in that. John Neville Excavating, this is for part of the excavation work at Glen Lake. So I wanted to let you know that a lot of that has happened. And lastly, Dead River Propane, almost $10,000. So again, the total manifest is $1.9 million and change. So we need a motion. If there's any questions, I can go over those, if anybody has any.
So moved.
So Ellen, you're making a motion to approve?
To accept the manifest as presented.
Perfect. Scott, can you go back to, so I could see everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Janelle, you're seconding?
I'll second, but I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I was curious about the special ed spending as far as what does that look like now in the COVID era? Are kids still getting their full service? I know a lot of these are out-of-district placements.
Yes.
Assuming that they're out-of-district kids are getting full services and then...
Yeah, there was, all of the, all of these special ed providers have been providing services remotely, similar to how we're providing it. In some cases, it involves Chromebooks, Zoom, you know, all, you name it. There was one provider in Massachusetts that I know that our director has been having conversations with. They were not providing services, I think, for, it was four weeks, and that was a Massachusetts provider, but they are now doing so. So all of them have been providing services throughout.
In those gaps where they weren't providing services, were we still getting billed?
We did, and that's, that's why Jennifer is having a conversation with them with regard to that.
Okay, great.
So not on your bill, but it was on a New Boston bill, which I've held until she can have that conversation. We have not, I have not gotten a bill for that provider for Goffstown.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I don't have the manifest right in front of me. I thought it said transportation.
Right.
So if this is not, if this is not being done on-site, and they're doing it through Zoom or something, why are we paying transportation?
We talked about this at a couple of board meetings, and we're going to be discussing it again in NAB, but we have been paying our transportation providers, both A, which is Goffstown Truck Center, and Durham. We're paying a reduced rate, but we're still paying them. That, that rate, what you saw there was our, almost two months' worth of led transportation. That $113,000 amount are still paying that. And I'll be talking to you in non-public, because I'm negotiating difference with them, which I can't discuss locally.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second, so I'm going to take roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous, Denise. Okay, so Scott, you have updates for us, student account?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things that I need board to take action on. The first I'd like to discuss is our student accounts. We have numerous student accounts, but specifically, I'll be talking about our elementary schools. So as you know, we do not pay for admissions to our, to many field trips. That is done by the students and their parents. And what happened was, many students and parents at our elementary schools paid anywhere from $4, $5, and $6 to attend field trips. Those monies were deposited, and then those field trips have been subsequently canceled. The, what we have before us, and Maple Avenue is the most, you know, pronounced issue right now, is we have almost 450 of these $4, $5, and $6 field trip payments. I spoke with Cheryl Pratt over at Plodzik and Sanderson, our auditor. I also spoke with Matt Snyder, an attorney at Soloway &amp; Hollis. Cheryl suggested that rather, that what we should do is roll those funds for these, for these kids to the following year, so that they'll be able to go on field trips. It's already paid for. Matt Snyder, who is the attorney for Soloway &amp; Hollis, agreed with a couple of caveats. If there is a student that is moving out of the Goffstown School District, we will issue them a refund. If not, those, money from our first grader will roll to second grade, second grade to third, fourth graders will get rolled to the Mountain View account. The, what I need, though, is I do, they both suggested that it would be a vote of the Goffstown School Board to roll student account monies for field trips to those student accounts for the, to those student grades for the subsequent year. And I would need a motion, if the board is inclined to do so, to do that.
I'll move that.
Okay, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Janelle? Quick question, Scott. Will you be sending a letter out to those parents so they know they have the option to call to get the money back?
The only option that they have is if they're moving the district.
Out of the district.
If they're moving out of the district, then we will do them a refund, but other than that, we won't be.
Right. Are you going to send a letter letting people know?
We're going to have, I'm going to have the principal send with any field trip, that have any field trip to do.
All right, perfect. Ellen, you have a question?
Yeah, it's going up to the next grade, but it's still staying with that child, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. Let's do a roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Thank you, Scott. You had some more stuff?
Yeah, the next one is food service reimbursement. So we have a similar situation here. Typically, what we're most concerned about is our high school seniors, because they will not be coming back next year. They're graduating. And what happens typically, if a student has a balance on their account, that money stays with them, and then they use it the following year. But seniors, we often, this time of year, we send an email to all students and their parents, who are seniors, basically saying, please spend down your food service accounts. Our policy has been, for the last few years, that any, any amounts over $5, we issue a refund. Anything under $5 stays within the food service account. And the reason for that is that it's very costly to issue a check. And that has just been our practice. Many districts have the same threshold, either $5 or $10. So I would need permission to reimburse, it's 125 students, and the amount is a little over $5,000. So we would be issuing 125 checks out of the food service account, and those would total a little over $5,000. I just need a motion and authorize me to do that.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Tim. I have a motion by Tim.
I'll second it.
Second by Susanna. Anybody have any questions for Scott? Okay, seeing none. We'll do a roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Thank you, Scott. And you have more, right?
Yeah, I had, well, I had one more related to food service. It's not going to be an action taken tonight, but it will be. And hopefully, if Denise can make a note, I want to put it on the agenda for the next school board meeting. But Megan put together a, she worked with Laura. You know, initially, we were thinking it was going to be around $250,000 deficit, because school is not open, and we're not collecting any revenues from, from the students. As it stands now, we're looking at around a $267,000 deficit from the Food Service Fund, which, in order to cover that, there is obviously insufficient fund balance to cover that. There would need to be a motion by the board to basically transfer any of the shortage of revenues to the Food Service Fund prior to the end of the year. So I'm going to put that as an agenda item for the next school board meeting. If you do have any questions about it, though, please let me know, and I'll certainly be able to respond to you. But I wanted to put that on your radar, that we knew that it would be a substantial amount of money, and it is. And I'm confident that in other areas where we've had less spending due to what's, due to school closures, we're going to be able to cover it. But I just wanted you to know where we stand on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions now for Scott about that? Okay, so we'll put it on next time, the agenda. Denise, you have that? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I just didn't want to spring this on you, like...
No, I appreciate that. I think everybody does.
If you have questions, please let me know. I know that the superintendent's going to talk about food service a little bit later into his report, and we have some exciting slides to show you about that. Last is the YMCA fee structure. And as you recall, we discussed the notion of not going out to bid for our after-school and before-school care. I believe that we're going to be discussing it in non-public session, but we do have an agreement, a current agreement with the YMCA that, and that agreement is a $2,000 rental fee for Bartlett School use, and a $2,000 fee for Maple Avenue School use. So we'll be talking about that negotiation in non-public session as well later on.
Okay, great. Thank you, Scott.
That's all I have. That's it for me. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian, Superintendent Report, you're up.
Thank you, Heather. Retta, I just wanted to add one more thing from PNC. We didn't get a chance to talk about it this evening, but we should talk about the board retreat, and whether it's the board's pleasure to postpone the retreat until a later point in time. But maybe we can talk about that at our next meeting. So just a few updates, if I may, this evening. I wanted to let folks know that we're going to be doing a survey for graduating seniors about graduation. We had the petition that I shared at your last meeting, and we certainly recognize that a lot of folks want to have an in-person graduation. But we also know that we have a number of students, a dozen or so, that are joining the military, and those students will be gone at the end of June. They're being deployed. So we're interested if high school seniors would like to have either a virtual-type event or some kind of a special recognition, even though it may not be a traditional, everyone-together-in-a-large- crowd graduation-type event. So we're soliciting some input from our seniors and their families. We were promised guidance by the Department of Ed last week on events like graduation, but it was not forthcoming. So at this point, we have not received any guidance from our public health officials or from the Department of Ed regarding graduations or other end-of-the-year celebrations and ceremonies. And we also have been told by the Commissioner that we will be receiving guidance for offering our extended school year programming, which the board will recall many students who receive special education services, as well as some Title I students and some other at-risk students, receive extended school year programming. The Commissioner shared that guidance would be coming out by the Department of Ed by May 15 regarding extended school year programming. That's simply too late for us. We can't wait until May 15. So we have fully embarked on planning a remote extended school year program. If there was some possibility that we could pivot and look at something in-sight, we would look at that a little later. But for the planning that's involved with hiring the teachers, setting everything up, and we'll have probably a presentation. Mrs. Berry and Dr. Dolph have been working very hard on planning our summer program, but I did want the board to know that at this point, we simply can't wait for the guidance to come out from the DOE. It's too late for us. So we are moving forward with a remote extended school year program. It will look a little different, but we'll have a presentation at a later point in time. I, Retta mentioned the talent show that Mountain View did. That was also on my list. I had the chance to watch that, and between the kids doing singing and dancing and playing instruments, I couldn't get over some of the archery that these, these kids were doing. This one girl was shooting an Oreo on her target, and she was sinking the arrow right into the, into the Oreo. It was really pretty, pretty impressive. So it was a really neat event. It's about an hour, but if you're looking for a break from Netflix, it might be a time well spent. And some of the teachers and some of the administrators performed. Mr. Demers did a song on his guitar and sang. He did a nice job. And I never knew that Shawn Johnson was quite the dancer, but I guess that shouldn't surprise me. But the teachers and all the students really did a nice, a nice job. I wanted to let the board know that we are beginning to offer a voluntary, voluntary teacher access to classrooms to pack up their rooms at the end of the year. So we worked really hard with the principals and with our facilities director, our facility supervisor, as well as Scott, Kate, MC, and myself, that we have a very safe process, that we will be allowing a very small number of teachers into the buildings. You need to know how much time teachers spend setting their classrooms up, and it takes them equally as much time to take it all down. So we're going to be doing that. At that same time, we're going to be packaging up stuff from kids' cubbies. There's things in their desks, and so we're going to label all those things, and we'll have the ability for families to come and pick up their personal belongings at a later point in time. That would include lockers at the high school, as well as athletic lockers. So we sent out a survey on Friday last week to get input from parents about our Connected Learning Program, and we've already had about 1,700 responses to that survey. The window of time goes until Friday at noon, so I'm hesitant to share any data with you at this point, particularly as the window extends until Friday. But we had a large response. I was really impressed that in just a couple of days... that in, in just a couple of days, that we had almost 2,000 responses. So I did want you to know and we'll plan to share that data with the board after the survey closes. So speaking of other elements around COVID planning, we have to date continued to not receive any guidance from the CDC or from public health officials about the criteria to reopen schools. The board is aware that I had developed criteria that we have posted on our website. So at this point, there hasn't been anything else forthcoming to evaluate my criteria versus someone else's criteria. But I also wanted to let you know that I'm working on a reopening plan. And again, there is no guidance that we've received from national or state officials. But I can give you a little bit of an overview. It is a phased approach. So similar to how the government is tackling reopening the economy. They're looking at a three-phased approach. I took a similar approach in the draft that I've developed. And it does include significant changes. And the first phase would include a hybrid-type approach. It's unlikely that we're going to be able to go from a remote learning model to being back in school without significant considerations being taken with respect to social distancing as well as our flow, the ability to transport students. So I did want the board to know that I'm working on a plan. I've kind of been dragging my feet a little bit, thinking that someone might do this and give it to us. But since that doesn't appear to be forthcoming, I have been working on that. With respect to transition services, I do want the board to know that we continue to do all of the grade-to-grade and school-to-school transition planning. Mrs. Hastings has developed, or excuse me, Kohler has developed a really comprehensive plan for incoming students at Mountain View. And we've shared that plan with the other schools. The high school was able to do a lot of their transition planning before schools were closed. So eighth-grade students had the chance to go up and do a step-up day at the high school. We had a parent night for incoming eighth graders. So some of those, we were able to get done before schools were closed. Mr. Gross, I wondered if you could give a quick update on the Glen Lake Project?
Yeah, sure. The Glen Lake Project is going very well. They're excavating for the footings this week. So a lot of all that, that whole hillside was removed. And now they're at a point where they'll, they'll be pouring concrete later this week, early next week. So we're moving, we're moving ahead.
Thank you, Scott. And Rheta mentioned Teacher Appreciation Week. We actually extend that. We typically recognize all of our staff. So I did recognize them and asked parents to contact their teachers and show their appreciation. So I hope that happens. But I would absolutely like to take this opportunity to again, recognize the great work of our teachers, our support staff, our administrators. And if you think about the ability and the nimbleness of public education, being able to pivot and completely change our instructional model with no notice, no planning, and no ability to really have thoughtful dialogue and to train people in how to do this. I again would offer my most sincere gratitude. And our last piece, Mr. Gross is going to share our Meals for Kids program. I'd like to recognize the great work of Megan Bizarro, our Food Service Director, as well as her staff. And Scott is going to show a couple of photos to you. So you can see that we are providing, Scott, you have some numbers in here somewhere, right?
Yeah, I think Megan-
I'll pass it off to you, Scott.
All right. So again, we are Megan started a couple of weeks ago, a food program that is open to all students age 18 and under. And this is part of the CARES Act. So what we did is we advertised it and using Nutrislice, as you can see here in the third, fourth bullet, they're able to call in their order. So we started this on Monday, April 20th, and it served 175 kids, as you can see, 136 in Goffstown and 38 at New Boston Central School. Last Wednesday and Thursday, that number rose to 333 students, 271 in Goffstown, 62 at New Boston Central School. So we're going to continue this program until at least June 30th. And we do get reimbursements from the federal government, $1087 for breakfast and almost $3.50 for lunches. So I know that a lot of board members have been calling me to make sure that we have, our students are getting meals and they definitely are taking advantage of that. This is just a sample of what is served. And as you can see, pretty good stuff. I know, Tim, you were, you wanted to know what we're putting in these bags. And so this is just a good indication of the breakfast and lunches that we are providing to students. So on Monday and Tuesday, we provide three breakfasts and three lunches. And then on Wednesday and Thursday, it's two breakfasts and two lunches. So
Now, Scott, it's, it's not pictured here, but I did just want to share with Mr. Cloutier that this does and can include chocolate milk.
Yes, it does include milk. And what we wanted to share with you is that, you know, things are a little different because we have to maintain social distancing for our food service employees. And Megan took a couple of shots at what the packaging looks like. So it's kind of an assembly line. And here we have some of our dedicated food service employees working in the senior, in the cafe area. And the next photo is the pickup. And this is where we, we deliver it curbside to the trunks of folks. They open up their trunk, we put the bag inside. And we've got, as you can see, we got Mr., I think it was Mr. McBride, or I think he was helping out that one day. But a lot of folks are helping out in the, not only in the preparation of these meals, but also in the distribution. So really, great job by Megan, great job by all of her dedicated food service employees to make sure that our students are getting healthy meals five days a week. And again, this is going to continue through June 30th. We may be able to extend it into the summertime and more to follow on that one.
So Scott, thank, thank you for sharing that. The Commissioner spoke to this last week and they, they are requesting of the feds to be able to continue this program through the summer. So if that's the case, we will continue the program all summer as well.
Great, thank you, Brian. So in between when you were talking, I saw Ellen's hand and Tim. So Ellen, you wanted to say, oh, and then Janelle. So we'll do Ellen, Tim, and then Janelle. Go ahead, Ellen.
I had two things in that, two quick ones. For picking up, students picking up their materials that are in school, their clothes and stuff, what about medications? Can they pick that up at the same time?
The medications have already been taken care of. The nurses and the administrators, either or, have already made arrangements for all those medications to go back to our families. So that's been taken care of.
Okay, the other thing, and I have no idea if it will play any part in our construction work at Glen Lake. But it was noticed over this past weekend, a lot of boat trailers parking in the Glen Lake driveway. And I don't know if that will be a problem going forward, as that probably gets worse and worse.
There is a fence, Ellen, that is blocking off the construction site for the most part. So the parking lot itself is inaccessible. The roadway is, the road itself, if you go not, about halfway up, there's a fence. So they should not be allowed to park in that area anyway. And that would just be a police enforcement issue.
I didn't think they were allowed to, but I know that there were quite a few there parking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Tim?
I also, thank you, Scott, for the call up there. I do appreciate getting some eyes on what's going on. I think it's important that we're continuing to help support students. The question for Brian is we're, you know, we're looking at right now as a country reopening and kind of getting things back up to where they were. The tiered reopening that the governor, for instance, has going on for the state, I don't see it, you know, I see it coming to a conclusion within basically the time period before we are back in school. So the question I have is if the state is fully operational before school reopens, why would we be doing a staged tiered reopening of the school? Wouldn't it just behoove us to go back to business as normal?
Well, I, I think if we can go back to business as normal, that would certainly be all of our preference. And in terms of reopening the economy, schools being open is critically important for all of our families so that parents can get back to work. So I, I think, Tim, I fully would like to see us back to a sort of 100% capacity. I'm just not sure that we're going to be able to safely do that. So again, in the absence of that guidance being provided to us by public health officials, I'm envisioning a staged approach that would have small groups coming in. Transportation likely looks very different, the ability to put kids without social distancing on school buses, class size, entrance, arrival, dismissal, movement about the schools, use of bathrooms. You know, when we think about the likelihood that students are asymptomatic COVID spreaders, that's quite likely. And because there is no vaccine, because there is insufficient testing, I know that last Friday, we had the highest number of tests that the state of New Hampshire had ever done. But I was on an emergency management director's call today. And they were talking that firefighters being tested for COVID, we're still waiting up to a week just to find out if they're positive or not. So I think until we have better public health guidance, in my mind, Tim, I see it as a staggered kind of tiered approach to reopening. Because not only do we have to keep the kids safe, as the employer, we need to keep all of our employees safe. So the, again, the possibility of children being asymptomatic and continuing to spread the virus, not only in schools, but then kids going home and infecting their parents, those parents being back at work, grandparents that are involved. So I do have a lot of fears that we're going to need a staggered approach to this.
Is that all? Okay, thanks, Tim. Yeah, I think it's good to plan ahead in case we need to do it that way. Janelle, you had a question or a comment?
I just had a quick question about the food service. I was curious if we were able, were for being able to use all of what's being donated. And if not, can we reach more kids? How can we do that? I just want to make sure that no food is going to the waste. And this is just such a beautiful program. I love seeing the pictures and it's so important to get food out to the kids and want to make sure everybody's getting fed out there.
So if I could address that, there are two components to what we're doing. Since the beginning, the Goffstown Food Network, the Food Pantry, as many people call it, they have been incredible. And they're the ones who they pack supplemental bags for students and families. And those supplemental bags are accompanying our, you know, the meals that we provide. So there are two different, if you would, services that are, that are being provided. We are providing the breakfast and lunches to students 18 and under. And then the network is providing supplemental food for students in need. So they, and that is not just, that is for kids who and families who need it. And the donations that you saw from Maple Avenue, that, that goes to support the Food Network, not necessarily, not our food program. So our food program is all food that is purchased by Megan and the Food Service Department. And then it is, you know, prepared into, you know, that, what you saw, that output, which was the salads and the sandwiches and those types of things. The donations that were garnered from the Maple Avenue folks, those go to the pantry and those get distributed. So we're, we're kind of attacking this from both sides, which is great.
All right, thank you, Scott. You're good, Janelle?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. That's great. Great to hear.
All right. There's any other questions for Brian? Okay, Brian, you're all set with your report?
I am. Thank you, Heather.
Oh, you're welcome. All right, moving on to old business. We're going to discuss committee meeting schedules at our last business, our last school board meeting. Some board members had asked of what the future holds for scheduling our committees. So Brian, you were gonna look into some of the subcommittees and get back to us?
Yeah, so a couple conversations that we had is we're certainly happy to reconvene those committees. At this point, I think it would be probably not prudent for the CNE Committee to resume their operations. The presentation that you saw at your last school board meeting regarding Connected Learning would be the entire work that we would do for CNE. But if it was the board's pleasure to resume the Building Committee, ANF, PNC met this evening already, Policy Review, those meetings could happen. We would need to think about a way to make them publicly accessible. So we could certainly speak to Adam. And maybe we could broadcast those either on his YouTube channel or something, but we would have to conduct them as public meetings. I think that would be important, obviously, for us to be compliant. So if it's the board's pleasure, we can certainly do that. I know administration is here and ready, willing to serve, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Thank you, Brian. I know with policy, we, I spoke with MC to see if there was any policies that we needed to address that we weren't congruent with the law. And we didn't think there was anything in the queue. I personally think that if we can hold off on some of these subcommittees until the fall, I think we're dealing with a lot right now. Trying to just figure out the remote learning and end of school, all this, all the graduations, all the ceremonies, trying to figure that out, trying to figure out summer. Unless something is pressing with some of these subcommittees, I recommend waiting until the fall and seeing what we need to do. Policy probably wouldn't meet again until we would only have maybe one more meeting. I don't know, ANF, usually Scott deals with Dan. Building Committee, that would be up to what Ellen and Tim and Jared wanted to do. And PRC, I mean, Rheta, you guys just met today, so unless you needed to do something else. But like Brian said, it would need to be made to the public for people. Ginny, go ahead.
I'm wondering, do we need to have something done for the stipend committee before July 1st? Do we need some resolution on the first half of that?
I, I think so, Ginny. I know, I can have Scott talk to, Scott and I have been talking about this. He's still working on getting some information. So it will be brought to a board meeting before the end of the school year so that we can make a decision, but that won't be forgotten. Scott, was there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah.
Is something, need a meeting for, like a stipend meeting for? Or is that something that we do through our board meeting?
The board can, can handle the $15,000 that is currently in the budget. All right, so you have that discretion. The stipend committee, the other $8,500 that was part of the collective bargaining agreement, that has to be something that is agreed upon by that committee and the union. But the $15,000 that is currently budgeted for stipends, the extra monies, that is in your purview. And you can certainly do that. My, my thought process, and I chatted with Heather, was to come before the board with a proposal that all principals have agreed upon, the administration has agreed upon, so that it would be more or less maybe an easier vote for the school board to entertain, knowing that it was agreed upon and vetted by all of the administrators from elementary through high school. So that was what I was striving to do. Is that okay?
Ginny? Oh, there she is.
Yes, and that's the only part that needs to be taken care of by July 1st for budgeting reasons, right? And the rest of it can be held over. Am I right?
Yeah, somewhat correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Then I'm good.
Okay. But yeah, we, we definitely will plan to have this at one of the next upcoming board meetings to make a decision. Ellen, you had your hand up?
Yes. That's addressing the existing allocations for stipends, which is great. But as the board knows, we've been asking for that, all that detailed data But, but, um, as the board knows, we've been asking for that, all that detailed data about the current status of all these stipended positions and what they're for and to look at it as a big picture for, um, I don't know, for budgeting next year or for negotiations, I don't know. But there was a lot of data we were looking for. Um, I'm wondering what the status of that is and when we can expect to have it.
That, that work, yeah, that work, um, Ellen came to a screaming halt with, uh, with this pandemic. So, um, we, we haven't even talked about it as an administrative team, apart from the, um, allocation recommendations that Mr. Gross was speaking to. So I, I think, um, I, I can't even say for sure, Ellen, whether that work, um, was almost finished up or not almost finished up. But certainly those folks have not met.
Okay. And Heather, for building committee, I, I'd like to hear from Tim and Jared, but I think we can wait until, uh, September. Uh, we certainly weren't coming forward with any kind of a building project for March. Um, but we may have some, another, uh, suggestion or something for the board to consider. I'm not sure. Um, so I'm thinking where we are now is okay. And then we're going to get some ballpark figures for some of the, uh, options. And maybe, uh, Jared's group can get to go on that in September and we'd have something to report out pretty soon after that, I would hope, after the whole group meets.
Right. Jared, Tim, do you have any say?
Yeah, my, my, um, my thought is that this building committee is tabled. I'm not sure why it's on the agenda as old business unless if we're taking it off the table. Um, so at this point, I have no, um, expected timeline of delivering any work and reporting that back.
Yeah, it was on the old business as part of all the committees to see if they, we wanted to start, uh, meet, having them scheduled to meet up. So that's why it was not looking for information from the building committee. It was just trying to decide if you guys were going to start meeting again. Tim?
Yeah, I think, uh,
If, if, if I can follow up. So Heather?
Yes.
Are you asking for a vote to take the building committee off the table?
No, we're not talking about whether it's staying on or off the table. We were just talking about if you guys wanted to start meeting. And if you did, then yes, it would need to be taken off the table. But it sounds like we're not doing that.
I would like to restart it in September.
Yep. So at our next meeting, we can discuss, our meetings in the fall, we can discuss where we stand with subcommittees and starting them back up again.
I think that would be a good idea.
Is that good, there?
Yeah, I, I think it really for, from a building committee perspective, you know, we rely on the administration. We have to be cognizant of the effort that they're putting through with a lot of the extracurricular activities that they have going on. Uh, so I, I wouldn't want to try to interrupt that work. But if, if the administration, or should I say, when the administration is ready to start back up, I will have the time to start back up and work with them and get my committee back together.
Right. Great. Thank you, Jared. Yeah, we appreciate that. We're trying to be flexible. But I think all subcommittees are just going to be on hold right now. And we'll revisit in the fall to see when we can, everybody can start back to normal with schedules. Um, so is there anything else with the building committees?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And you're good with the stipends, Ginny? That is something that'll come down the pike, uh, soon, that Scott will figure numbers out and stuff to come to us.
Yes, because, um, the other part of our committee is we have a lot more work to get to anything. So, and we do have administrators working on that committee too. So, um, I'm in the same position, I think, without, um, we have other things that are more important right now. And I think we can get back to that in the fall when, um, people have time to, to give the due that it, that it should have.
Needs, absolutely. All right. Thank you, Ginny.
You're welcome.
All right. So if we're good with, uh, committee discussion, I'm going to move on to new business, foreign exchange student discussion. Brian, that's you.
Yes, thank you, Heather. So I just wanted to bring this, um, topic up for discussion with the school board. And, um, specifically, policy J F A B B is our foreign exchange student policy. We have a number of students that are in the queue right now. Thank you, Scott. And, um, at this point, we have not finished processing these students. I actually would recommend that we have kind of a general discussion about this. And then I can reach out to the local coordinator, actually lives in Goffstown, who is from the company EF Exchange. And right now, we have four students that are, um, in the queue for a foreign exchange experience. We have, um, one student from Spain. Mrs. Lewis has concerns if we found ourselves in the fall in a remote learning environment. Spain has very strict concerns about what they, um, what students need to have on their transcripts. And, um, Joyce had some concerns about that. We have another student from Germany. And then we had, uh, one student, I never found out the country of origin. And then we have a family in New Boston that is also in process. So right now, there are four known, and I, I think there might even be a fifth. But really, the, the conversation is if we're not able to reopen in the brick and mortar structure, um, I think we should really strongly consider whether or not we're able to offer foreign exchange students an experience. Um, let's say, for example, um, you know, new the United States has the highest number of COVID cases in the entire world. Why anyone from Denmark would want to send their sixteen-year-old child to fly into JFK Airport in New York City and then drive to New Hampshire, um, truly is beyond me. But, um, if in fact, these students weren't able to come, are we going to offer them a remote learning environment? Um, so I, I just, I think that there are a lot of concerns. I would encourage the board to consider having a general discussion about this. And then I'd like to notify the EF coordinator and solicit some input from her. She did reach out to me and asked, um, if we were going to finalize the approvals. And her argument was that she submitted all the paperwork like she was supposed to, but they haven't been approved. And of course, you have your, your policy B G A, which allows you to take sort of emergency action on amending, on suspending, deleting policies. So I do think it would be within the board's purview to take an action on this. I might encourage you to not take that action this evening. We could put it on the next agenda, because I would like, um, those that are in the queue to be notified and give them the opportunity to have a voice in this. I brought this, um, concern up to our South Central Superintendent's Group this past Friday. And, um, J- Jerry Frew, who is from the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, was on our Zoom call, and he said that he was going to bring this to all the regions in the state because he hadn't heard of anyone, um, raising this concern. I only heard from one other superintendent, um, Dr. Dean Cascaden, the superintendent in Bo, let me know that they suspended, um, any foreign exchange students. And that was the only district that I have heard that has done that. Um, likely that will be my recommendation, but I do think it's important to give, um, the public the opportunity to weigh in, to provide public comments. And, uh, particularly that there are these four or five kids that are in process. But I'm just really worried about our ability to, um, meet the requirements that these students would be, um, seeking. And if they're not able to, they, they could, um, these students could be in Goffstown, but they may never step foot in Goffstown High School until some later point in the future. And it seems like an undue burden on our staff to have to, um, potentially deal with all the complications that these students maybe have never even, um, gone down this kind of a learning path before. So I did want to raise this as a concern that I have and to see if the board had any, um, any input with respect to this.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Um, given that this is a worldwide pandemic and we, like all the reasons Brian just said, I, I would like to hear the board members, I'd be very much in favor of suspending the exchange program. I'd do it for the entire year, but at least, at least for the first half of the school year. Um, that doesn't make any sense at all to bring anybody in from any place um, for, for this exchange program. And doing remote learning isn't accomplishing what the exchange program's supposed to do anyway. Um, so it makes no sense at all that we would even entertain this for the beginning of the school year. But I'd like to hear what other board members might be thinking.
Yes, Susanna, go ahead.
I think this is supposed to be cultural experience for the students. And part of it is being with the other students in the school and working with them and interacting with them. So offering them online, uh, learning environment is not the right way to go for them.
Yeah, right. I agree. Brian, um, if we, I mean, we can all discuss it more as a board and then make a decision on the next board meeting.
I think Heather froze. Um, one, one other piece, just while she's coming back on, that I would bring to the board for your consideration. One of the students is from New Boston. So I also would like to bring this topic to the New Boston Board because they have to pay tuition. And whether they want to authorize the payment of tuition for a student who may not step foot, um, onto our campus is something I think they also should have the opportunity to weigh in on.
Heather, is Heather back?
I'm back.
Oh, there she is.
So stressful.
I think I saw Ginny's hand up before me.
I, I missed what your answer was, um, because I froze out. But are we able to do a half, like if, make a decision December? I don't know how much time families need to do this if we decide, does it have to be all or nothing, I guess?
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be part of my, um, further investigation. Uh, all the students right now are all from the same company. So I would just speak with their New Hampshire coordinator, uh, between now and your next board meeting.
Okay.
Heather, I think in there someplace I saw Ginny's hand go up.
Did you have your hand up? All right. Thank you, Ellen. Go ahead, Ginny.
Unmute yourself.
Um, I, I think, um, I agree with what has been said because I think the, the whole purpose of the program is to come out in, uh, it like Suzanne said, interact with people, um, see what the United States is like, see what our, our kids are experiencing and get to see, you know, what life is like in the United States. And I know our kids are feeling cramped and are dying to get out and see their friends even. And, um, I don't know why anybody would want to come here into this environment because it's not what they're looking for at all. Um, and so I would agree with everybody. I, I don't think we would be doing these kids any favors by having them come at this point. I think if at some point it changed, then that would be fine. But I don't think that's how their program works. I think, you know, you accept them now and then they come for the year. I've never heard of a, you know, a half-year program. So I think my vote would be to cancel for the year.
Hmm.
As much as I think it's a awesome program.
Right. Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, it's not just, um, how we're doing here. It's what's happening in their country. And when they get here, then they have to go on a fifteen-day quarantine or something to make sure they don't have it, bringing it over with them. I, I just, I don't see, I, I wish someone would share with me if they think there's an upside to continuing with it for next year. But I, I'd really support that we suspend it for the whole year.
Right. Um, well, I'm not sure we want to, oh, go ahead, Tim.
Uh, I think, so I, I saw where you were going with that statement. I was going to say, it sounds like everyone's kind of on the same page. I was going to make a motion to suspend it until next year, but I think you were about to wrap us up on that.
Yeah, I was gonna wait to call for a motion to the next board meeting to give public the ability to come speak to us, let them think about it. I mean, I think it sounds like everybody's pretty, um, much on board. Um, unfortunately, having to suspend it for the year sounds like the best, uh, situ- is, you know, decision right now. But I think we should table until next board meeting. Brian, you can talk to the, the advocate, the, whatever they're called, the foreign exchange company, maybe with some more information, but give public comment.
Yeah, I just, um, thank, thank you for that. I, I, I do agree with everything that, um, the board members have said. I just know that because there are families that were already in process before the board does take a formal action, um, I do think it would be advisable to allow them the opportunity to at least, um, weigh in and consider if they'd like to have comment to the board.
Right. And you'll let them know?
I, I will, and, uh,
They can send a letter or you call into the public comment number or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call, I'll call the coordinator and, uh, we'll ask Mrs. Moran to put this on the next agenda as well.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Just one thing, Heather. If there's anything that comes up where for some reason, this looked like something we could do, I would also like to know, how would this be done? With that, what is it, fifteen-day quarantine required and all that kind of stuff? I think there's a lot more involved than, than maybe might meet the eye immediately. And it concerns me greatly because they're coming from other countries around the world and we have no idea what's going on over there.
Well, the fifteen-day quarantine is arbitrary. I mean, you have to have a fifteen-day quarantine if you go to Massachusetts. I went to Mass last week and I still went to work today.
Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like we're good with this topic for right now. We'll put it off to the next school board meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right, moving on. We have board authorization request. Um, in our agenda packet, Ms. Moran typed out exactly our motion that we did last week. If somebody could read it, given, uh, the superintendent authorization under the temporary regulation.
Point of order, the one that we passed last week was for the remainder of the school year. I do not believe we need to pass this, this, this week.
Because we wrote next successful board meeting, we need to do it at each one.
I'm looking, uh, again, point of order, I'm looking at the meeting minutes from our four twenty meeting.
Hmm.
And I see within there, let me get to the actual section, that there was an amendment to the motion to allow the superintendent intended to modify or adapt school board policy as needed for the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty season with an update provided at the next successful school board meeting.
So it was given.
Okay, yeah, I don't see that. I'm looking.
Um, page fifteen, fourth paragraph from the bottom in italics.
Okay. All right, it's, uh, so Brian, then you should be good.
Okay, good to go.
Does that work? Denise, is that good?
Um, I can't recall if the same authorization was granted to the business administrator to continue to pay the bills.
Right, I was gonna go to that.
I don't recall. Jared, do you see that in the, in the minutes as well?
That was not in the minutes.
That says to the next successful board meeting. It's right above the school staffing.
Ah, okay, yes, until the next successful school board meeting. So we need to do that one again. Thank you, Janelle. So can someone do a motion to grant continued authorization to the business administrator to pay bills?
I will make that motion.
Uh, Jared made the motion. Ellen, you want a second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Um, quick question here. Is this something that maybe we want to also do until the end of the year, so we don't have to do it to the next meeting?
It's to the next successful school board meeting.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if anybody has any interest in changing the motion to go to the end of the year, so we don't have to do this next?
Oh, I see what you're saying. And so we don't, so if we do it to the end of the school year, so we would have to amend it.
What's the protocol on that? Yeah, what's the protocol? Because we've already started voting on a motion on the floor.
Brian, Scott?
You can do it again at the next meeting. That's fine.
Okay. All right, so at the next meeting, then we'll change that to end to All right, so at the next meeting, then we'll change that to end to the end of the school year. So right now, I need Janelle.
Yes.
Okay, Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we're unanimous, Denise, on the business administrator paying the bills. Did you get that? Okay, all right, so moving on to school staffing.
Mr. Gross, if you could put the staffing sheet up on the screen, please. So we will have a discussion that we need to have a non-public session for for compensation for some of these folks in our SSS category, but we have, this is just for notification, that we have an assignment change for Mrs. Birdseye at Maple Lab. She will be transitioning from an interventionist position back into the regular classroom. And then for approval, we have a teacher resignation of a special education teacher at Goffstown High School, Jessica Croft, and we would need a motion on that.
So moved. This is Ellen. What happened?
I will second, this is Susanna.
I'm not hearing anybody.
I second, this is Susanna.
There we go. We can't hear you, Heather.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was still muted. Okay, Ellen made the motion, Susanna seconded. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Retta? Retta?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, and Heather, yes, so we're unanimous.
Scott, if you could put that sheet back up, please. So next section would be teacher nominations. We have a school psychologist position for Jessica White as a new hire, and we have Candace Dumont as a elementary teacher at Maple Lab. Candace is the one that she did a long-term sub and was hired for the remainder of the school year position. And Mrs. Pischka has brought her forward as a nomination, so we have those two nominations for your approval.
So moved, this is Ellen.
Okay, motion by Ellen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Okay, Brian?
Yeah, and so the last piece of that, these are our SSS positions, which are folks that kind of don't fit into one of our union agreements. We will discuss these and the compensation associated with them, as well as the technology positions and the maintenance positions in non-public. So Scott, there's nothing else at the bottom of that sheet, is there?
Technology?
Yeah, so the the only other piece that I would share is if you go up a little more at this point, I do just want to let the board know something, that this resignation of a high school special education position, I have frozen the high school in replacing that position. Mrs. Stoyl's preschool numbers have continued to climb. We've continued to have more and more preschool students enrolled. And Mrs. Stoyl is requesting a new special education preschool position. So at this point, I have asked the high school to hold off on hiring or replacing that position, and we are evaluating whether we can move that position as a vacancy to Glenlake School. So given given the the complexity of the economy, we felt that that was the prudent thing for us to do. So more to come on that, but I did want to let you know that. And the rest of those positions, Mrs. McGrath is with us, and we will discuss them in non-public.
Okay, great, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, so the last thing on the agenda is other business that may legally come before the meeting. One quick question, and it's for Susanna. Did you get the email about the SAU joint area agreement? If one of those dates, June 2nd, 3rd, or 4th, was better for you?
Yes, I got the email. I, both of those states work.
All three work?
Yeah, all three, sorry.
All right, thank you. And just to confirm that the next meeting, we are going to be having quite a more stuff. We're going to have the retreat, talk about the retreat. We're going to have the agenda with the food service, if we're going to do transfers with that, and also the foreign exchange student discussion. Is there anything else before we go into non-public? Okay. So with the non-public, I'll read this, and then Scott, I think Adam is going to disconnect, and everybody else stays where you are. Is that correct, Scott?
It would be my pleasure to remove Adam from the Zoom meeting.
All right, well, let me.
I'll second that.
Let me read the non-public, because I'm going to need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a, semicolon, 311A and C. The dismissal dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplinary of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected has a right to a meeting and requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body health unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based on inability to pay or or poverty of the applicant. I need a motion?
So moved.
I had Janelle, and then Ellen will second, so we're going to do roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle? Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather?